Mr. Markham?
Here.
Mrs. Mock?
Here.
Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Here.
Mrs. Smrek?
Here.
Um, please stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the middle of this whole and liberty and justice for all.
Kim, we could probably do you both at the same time. Mr. Porter, Mrs. Smrek, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Austintown Local School District, Mahoney County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Here, would you please settle in and I might read the mission statement one more. Protocol.
The Austintown Local School District is a community with a proud legacy and a progressive approach to education. It provides an inspiring education that strengthens and prepares our students for unlimited future opportunities.
Perfect. Thank you and congratulations to Mrs. Smrek and Mr. Porter. Item number two, roll call.
Mr. Markham?
Here.
Mrs. Mock?
Here.
Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Here.
Mrs. Smrek?
Here.
Item three, approve the agenda for organizational meeting, January 11, 2024.
Second.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yeah.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
At this time, the Board of Education will now be taking nominations for the office of the President of the Board of Education for calendar year 2024. At this time, I will ask for a motion to open the floor for nominations for the 2024 President of the Austintown Local Board of Education.
Second.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Don Sherwood, Vice President of the Board.
Okay. I will now ask for a motion to close the floor for nominations for Board President.
Second.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
We will now vote for the office of the President of the Board of Education. That nomination is Mr. Don Sherwood. I will call each of your names and you will affirm with yes or signify no as a nay vote. Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
The Board shall nominate Mr. Sherwood as Board President for calendar year 2022 of the Austintown Local School District. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
We will now ask for nominations for the office of Vice President of the Board of Education. I will ask for a motion to open the floor for nominations for the 2024 Vice President of the Board of Education.
Second. Second.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Floor's open. I would like to nominate Mr. President, Fred Markham, Vice President. Make your nominations.
I will ask for a motion to close the floor for nominations for Vice President.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
We will now take the vote for the office of Vice President of the Board of Education. That nominee is Mr. Fred Markham. I will call each of your names, affirmative vote as yes, a nay vote as a no. Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
The Board shall nominate Mr. Fred Markham as Vice President of the Austintown Local School District Board of Education for calendar year 2024. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mr. Porter? Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
I will now administer the oath of office for the newly elected President and Vice President. Mr. Sherwood, you are first. Mr. Sherwood, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as President of the Board of Education of the Austintown Local School District, Mahoney County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office of calendar year 2024 and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I will.
Mr. Markham, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as Vice President of the Board of Education of the Austintown Local School District, Mahoney County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office of calendar year 2024 and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I will.
Congratulations.
Mr. Sherwood, do you need assistance? Thank you. Grass red. Item eight, approve the recommendation that the Board use Robert's Rules of Order as the parliamentary procedure guidelines for meetings of the Board and its committees.
Second.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Approve the appointment of one member of the Board of Education to serve as the legislative liaison with the Ohio School Boards Association. Then I would, and we will appoint Kim Smrek for that liaison position, item nine.
Second.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item 10, approve the appointment of one member of the Board of Education to serve as a student achievement liaison with OSBA. I'd like to appoint Kathy Mock for that position.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
My turn to be the delegate? I'll do it.
Oh, let me do it.
I'll do it.
Good.
I got some free time. Item 11, approve the appointment of one member of the Board of Education to serve as a delegate to the OSBA Capitol Conference.
Appoint Don Sherwood?
Yes. Amen. Thanks, Fred.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item 12, approve the appointment of one member of the Board of Education to serve as the alternate delegate to the OSBA Capitol Conference. Appoint Fred Markham for that alternate delegate position.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Thirteen, authorize the Treasurer to make disbursements for payroll, bonds, and accounts payable when due and invest funds within the authority in accordance with the Board adopted investment policy.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Fourteen, as recommended by law, establish a service fund in the amount of $4,000. Such funds may be used to take reimburse, to make reimbursements to members of the Board for expenses incurred in the performance of duties outside the district.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Fifteen, approve the resolution for the Board of Education to reserve the right of approval for the purchase of certain goods and services, including utilities, fuel, and food products in excess of $15,000, with the provision that in exceptional circumstances, due to board and meeting dates, approval may be granted by the Board President or Vice President.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes, excuse me.
Sixteen, approve the recommendation that travel expenses for Board members, Superintendent, Treasurer, Curriculum Director, and Special Education Director for OSBA, OASBO, ODE, Regional Chamber of Commerce, and other school-related professional activities be approved through January 1, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Seventeen, approve the recommendation that compensation for Board members at the rates and for the purposes outlined in Ohio Revised Code 3313.12 be authorized.
Second.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Eighteen, approve a resolution authorizing the Superintendent to temporarily hire staff when vacancies occur between board meetings and to fill vacancies when it becomes necessary pending board approval.
Second.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Nineteen, approve a resolution authorizing the Superintendent to accept resignations between board meetings.
Second. Second.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item twenty, approve the recommendation authorizing the Superintendent to file applications for projects and grants considered desirable for the Auston Local School District.
Second.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item twenty-one, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approve retainment on an as-needed basis of the following legal counsels for district needs.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Twenty-two, approve the recommendation to continue participation in the following state and federal grant programs during the 24 calendar year as mentioned below.
Second.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Twenty-three, approve the resolution whereas the following 501(c)(3) nonprofit booster organizations and school support groups may operate for the 24 calendar year effective 1/1/24 to 12/31/24 and be permitted to use the school's name and district logo as they seek student enrichment and strive to reach educational goals. And whereas the following booster organizations and school support groups shall provide annual financial reports for money that flows in and out of the club coffers, and whereas the Auston Board of Education shall not oversee the financial operations of booster organizations or school support groups, therefore be it resolved that the following groups be approved in accordance with adopted board policy, KMA relations with booster organizations, and the Booster Organization Handbook as mentioned below.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
We should do this till the end, correct? Now we're doing the fourteenth ID.
Third Thursday.
Of every month at four.
Okay. We have a motion for the ongoing board meetings to be on the third Thursday of every month at 4:00 PM work session, 5:00 PM. 4:00 PM work session, 5:00 PM board meeting.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn the organizational meeting of today's session.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Work session. Will you call them into order, please?
Mrs. Smrek?
Here.
Mr. Markham?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Sherwood?
Here.
Mrs. Smrek?
Here.
First of all, before we get to item number five, would like to have a motion to table item 11 from this agenda tonight.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we're not going to do the pledge and mission statement. We did that earlier in the meeting at 3:45. I don't want somebody to think we're being disrespectful to the country or the district. Item five, upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, approve the agenda for the January 11th, 2024 Board of Education regular session.
So moved. Second.
An addendum, an addendum that table, item 11 is table. Item six, public comments.
Yeah, yeah, let me call, I'll call the world. Sorry about that, huh? Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
For item six, we have one person signed up for public comments this evening. Ms. Sally Green, would you please come forward? Just to be clear, you have, I believe, three minutes to speak. Stick your name and your address, please. Thank you.
I'll make it short. First of all, I apologize for just showing up out of the blue.
No problem.
But I had the evening free and I wanted to start my tour, so to speak. And so this is the first official tour of the Ohio School Board Association, 2024 President. And I am so grateful that I could come to yours because this is where my son had his student teaching.
All right.
In 2010. And so I am excited to be here. And I first want to say, as a Board Member, this is my 19th year. Thank you. Thank you, each and every one of you, for your dedication, because I know what it takes to be a Board Member. A public official, there's a lot of them out there, but school Board members are the most important because they are in charge of giving our students the best education possible. So thank you. Now, I only have two other comments to make. As you begin your service, I'm not sure if anyone's new. Is anyone new? Is everyone veterans, as we like to say? So congratulations. But as you start this new year, I just want to remind you to serve with a leader's vision and a servant's heart, embodying the true essence of guidance, compassion paired with steadfast service and support. I would value you sending your thoughts of strengths and challenges that you're facing in the 2024 year to me because I want to make sure that your voice is heard in Ohio School Board Association as I continue to fight for public education. And I would encourage you to please join me as we embark on that powerful journey in supporting students, igniting their passions, hearing their voices, and equipping them for success in an ever-evolving world. So thank you. Always remember that you are special, you are important, you are loved, and you can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Item seven, Mr. Porter, if you would, please?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Matt Man, Matt Hamley, if he could come up to the front. He called me a couple months back and he said he had an extra shirt available from the championship of the, is this the state championship or the re, the?
The Central.
The what one?
Central.
The Central Region shirt. And I talked to Mr. Pink about it. He requested that he do some kind of a write-up so he would know what it was about as well. So.
Open it up, coach. You can't wear that one, bud.
Yeah. What's the other one? I haven't seen it.
So on behalf of the ACB and our softball team, we just wanted to thank you guys for your generous support over our run all summer. And we just wanted to present you guys with a jersey. We also have a ball signed by the whole team and then a banner as well to hopefully be displayed in one of the service.
That'll be done.
All right, good job, man. Tim, can you? Yeah, I want to see the banner. Oh, wait, Matt, hold that up one second. We didn't.
Awesome. Very nice. Nice, good stuff.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hey, Matt, we want the same thing next year, right?
I'll try.
All right. You guys want to see it?
Okay, item number eight, Treasurer's Consent Items. Upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, approve the following items A through C by consent action.
So moved.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item nine, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approve the following items A through G by consent action.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item 10, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approve the following contractual agreement, A, made by and between the Austintown Local School District and access as mentioned below.
Second.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Onto item 12. Approve the five-year administrative contract of Blasey Karlovic, Treasurer, Auston Local Schools, effective August 1st, 2024 to July 31, 2029.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Porter? Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Congratulations there.